All right, guys, we'll go ahead and get started here. It is 5:15. The Wednesday, August 25th, Special Budget Hearing Meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 5:15 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
And Commissioners, we have an agenda presented in front of us. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second, Your Honor.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. We have no announcements this evening. Moving on to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. You can approach us at the side podium and we'll have the timer going. Anyone for public comment? Going once, going twice. Public comment is now closed. We have a consent agenda this evening. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. On to new business. This is our first of at least a couple of budget meetings. So we'll have a budget overview today for fiscal year '22. I will go ahead and kick things off to our City Manager, Karen Kovacs, who may call on other city staff as appropriate. Take it away, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so this is really kicking off the official, you know, budget hearings. I'm a little bit more used to what you guys have experienced in the past. We did have a work session on Monday to really kind of talk about a preliminary budget for general fund. Tonight, we will probably provide a small update on that at the end, on where we stand with the recommendations and the guidance that we received on Monday. But tonight, we are focusing on a section of our funds, which are really classified as our special revenue funds, is where we'll start off. And we will move through to our debt service funds. And if time is permitting, we will move on to some of our enterprise funds and our internal service funds. So we, while it feels like we are going to cover a lot, they are all connected in similar fashion, you know, as we discussed with the general fund. So we will seem to be moving quite quickly, but if you need us to slow down or you have specific questions, please feel free to stop us or speed us along here. This is a very different format than what you are used to, but it is meant to cover more of the high-level, you know, view of this and, you know, with the details being worked out, you know, on our level and through other questions. So with further ado, I'm going to, without further ado, I'm going to keep it over to Mary.
Okay. So again, yeah, we're just going to start right through with Fund 202, which is our street funds. Now, all of this is going to be part of the special revenue fund. So these are going to be very dedicated revenue sources, so they also have very dedicated expenditures that go along with them. So it's, kind of goes hand in hand, where once you know what your revenues are, you know how much you have to expend under these.
Mary, could you please tell us which page to reference? And then Commissioners, just as a refresher for those who have done a budget hearing before and those who haven't, at least, you know, by my standard, it's okay to ask a question in the middle of this section when we're on budget. So feel free to raise a hand and I can, I can call on you, but I just don't want folks to feel like they're not allowed to ask questions and engage. So go ahead, Mary. Sorry about that.
Please do. No, this starts off on page three of your special revenue tab.
Thank you.
Or all funds tab, I think. As I said, we covered a lot of general fund stuff already on Monday.
Thank you.
So we'll defer to that. So the fact sheet review, as you wish, we're kind of, just kind of keep it again at a very high level of discussion this time. So I'm going to kick right into page four, where we're looking at the estimated revenues and then also the appropriation section. For the major, and you're also going to see, and the next one is the Fund 203 for the local streets, these are all state-funded programs. Most of it is coming from, it's a calculation that the state runs based on population size. So we run through the state's calculation and the biggest mover there is going to be close to $2 million in state revenue sharing, and I can already tell I'm getting to line by line, so tell me to slow it down. Again, these revenues are pretty much in line with what we've seen in the past. The biggest line item adjustment that is going to vary is the proceeds of notes, which you're going to see is 202-698. The total for fiscal year '22 is budgeted currently at $1.9 million. That is exclusively the Lake Shore part of the bonding. That's going to correlate, if you look down under the construction section of this page, there's a couple of footnotes that show that the $1.9 million of expenditures for Lake Shore, we've got $350,000 for simp and there's $5,000 for some mapping. Trying to keep the bonding, you're going to find that my overall style for these budgets is I'm trying to keep the revenues on the low side and our expenditures on the high side, so that we can kind of make sure that we're being very conservative. So I just wanted to make sure that the bonding was covered for that project, because that is that, as you'll recall, we try and keep our bonding at the same amortization. And so Lake Shore is already going to be about $6 million. So I thought, well, at least let's keep that at a minimum and see how much we would need to cash flow. In this fund, there actually is an opportunity for that if the state revenues come in as budgeted. Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, the $6 million is going to be back for about a day.
Oh, yeah. Just to be, and so this $1.9, where does that come? I'm, you lost me on where that?
So each bond covers the streets and it covers the utilities for those streets. So we spread that $6 million out among the other funds. So this is just the local street portion of it. The paving and if there were sidewalks down there, we'd cover that stuff too.
But, okay, but isn't the road done? I don't, what else are we doing?
Uh, Dennis? So the final phase, this is what was talked about at the capital improvement work session that we had.
So, yeah, but there's no paving left to be done, right? What are we?
You know, Dennis, if you're available, why don't you pop up up here? So I do, we did talk about how there are two phases to this portion and the way that, you know, the first phase had been done. This is simply moving that expenditure and recognizing that within the second phase. So Dennis, if you could elaborate a little bit more on that.
Yes, correct. That, that the $1.9 that's listed in there in street funds was, was for things that could be covered by that account, but it is for Phase Two, which is what we talked about at the capital outlay work session. That's the shoreline work.
Thank you.
So it's the, it's the rock. It's putting the rock in.
The rock and dune and swale and all those other improvements in that area.
And so, all the, but then we didn't get some grants, so how much of the work are we going to do versus what was planned for? I know this is, but this is like, this was a lot of money. I'm not going to go into this detail on everyone, but this was the biggest amount of money. So I, and I really don't understand. We saw numbers of tens, $10 million and $6 million, and now it's $2 million. So what is going to happen down there? Is this really my fundamental question?
I, I think the numbers that are reflected in here, what Mary's speaking to is a breakdown of the total cost. $1.9 million comes from street and road account. Another, I don't have it in front of me, but another amount comes from your, your storm. And then there'll be another part, another amount that will come from grant and so on and so forth when you break it. If you go left or right across the top of it, you've got a certain amount in street, a certain amount in storm, and then a certain amount in grant. And then we have other funds, which I believe are the previous bonding amount that's carried over from last time, which is about $2.1 million. It's on this sheet right here.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I whack you with that?
So...
Stick you in the side of the head with it?
Yeah, I brought that from the prior year.
I don't...
Yeah. So this, this sheet right here is the actual capital sheet, and I think what the CFO is attempting to explain here is the breakdown of the actual total cost, okay, for that last phase, which would include $1.9 from the street, $4.6 plus from the storm, $1.5 from grant, and then $2.1 carryover.
Okay.
Now, I'm just looking at it and going, if we're this short on stuff, isn't this one of those places where we could save by pushing this large, large activity for a year or two instead of forcing ourselves on it? Because from what the projects I've seen on Lake Shore so far, every time it's exceeding what we expected it to, and we have more money, we don't have any extra money to spend this time. Is that a risk we're willing to take right now?
I can, I can speak to that. We committed to a grant and we entered into a grant agreement on this project, and we are working to meet the deadline of that. We're actually working under an extension right now.
But how much is the grant for?
Um, well, it's a total of like $3.6 over both of the projects, and we've already used some of it.
So Dennis, the amount that we would have to pay back would be what the $1.1 million, was it?
Well, the $1.5, $1.5 plus.
So without completing that grant, we would have to repay the first portion of that grant funding. So that's the ramification if we do not finish.
Plus our match that we've put into it already and, which has been considerable with the design being done by Baird.
If we spent the match already, we wouldn't have to re-spend the match, would we?
No, but we're, we're definitely very far into this with the expenses incurred up to this point.
I, I don't disagree with that. I just want to make sure that the money that we're spending going forward, we're not spending simply because we've already spent money.
Correct.
And, and I guess the other part of this, so are all the approvals and permits and everything in place for this project? That, that's the other question.
The permit that we're waiting on is the bottom lands permit, and it, it was submitted and it's been conditionally reviewed up to this point. We're still waiting on one deed that we have to work with the city attorney to do for a remaining sliver of property, but once that's done, we'll have the permit in hand.
It would be really helpful to know, you know, the status of these kinds of big projects as we're being asked to make these decisions. If, so if there's a way to understand, you know, in advance where the project is when it's presented to us, that would, that would really make it easier rather than having to ask for it. I don't know how else to say that. So, because it was, it wasn't ready when we talked about this last time, and, and we didn't know when things were going to be ready. So, you know, I, I want to know how, you know, we're in this situation where we, that we didn't expect. And so here we are with another big project, and is it going to go, you know, how, how, how are we, how can we make, I'm just, um, it's really unclear still to me what, so we're going to pay for a project to be completed that the, at some point in the next year? That's, that's what I, is that what we are telling us?
That's correct.
And is there going to be anything else after that coming from this project?
No. It's the final phase.
I think looking at the, the capital outlay sheet that was discussed at the capital outlay meeting, might be a little bit more helpful to see it as, as a total versus individual. So you might want to have those both ready side by side as we go through some of those funds. Yes. And this is kind of, it is something that is, is in process. There are several pieces to this, and there are still opportunities that we are exploring for some funding for this. It's, it's not all lost cause at this point. It is, we're still exploring what we can.
Okay.
I think we're going to have to come back to this lecture of ours, Phase Two, at some point during the budget hearing. I've got some questions that I'd like to think some about. We may need to have a work session just on this Phase Two piece, but I don't want to hold up the entire budget proceedings based on this one project. Mary, go ahead.
Started you guys off on the black diamond of the budget. We get through this, I hope that the rest of the night will go a lot easier. So, again, this is where we account, this fund especially is where we count for, I, I try and speak to Fund 202 and 203 at the same time. They cover the same type of projects. These are sidewalk, our street, our snow plowing and things like that. We do get some revenues for that, and everything is budgeted for according to what we can expect to get from the state. And you're going to see that those expenditures are right in line with prior years. And pray for another mild winter to get through these, these two funds. So. But again, other than the bonding, there's not a whole lot of surprises in those two. I'm going to move quickly into the local street as well. And just the other highlighted item there, we've got the bond proceeds in that section is $500,000. Again, this is for Lake Shore. It also is going to start to cover College Avenue and the simp improvements for our local streets. One of the bigger items in this line, in this fund, and I don't have page numbers, so I really, I can't help you out right now.
203 is going to be...
Just right where the hole punches.
Thank you. For the most part, the transfer is in $1.5 million for fiscal year '22. If you go all the way down to the end of page nine, there's $723,000 budgeted for debt service transfers out. So this, again, I'm trying to kind of illustrate here that most of the transfers in that are coming in from the general fund, half of it is going towards those debt service payments for prior bond obligations. And if you look department by department, there's a subtotal for each department for each type of service that's provided. Not a whole lot of variance from prior years. Again, this is, all these budgets have been pretty much status quo. This is the minimum it's going to take to run these funds and, yeah.
Can I make a simple analogy?
Please.
Where we live in paycheck to paycheck?
In these funds? It's part of what we discussed on Monday, for sure, which is why we talked about the...
Every time we get a paycheck in, we've got to pay our loan off.
It's getting close.
I mean, not all the way, but it's not a lot of room.
In the street funds in particular. I mean, it's, you talk to any other municipality and the state funds just aren't there to cover. And especially as Karen alluded to on Monday as well, the, the formula that the state uses is calculated based on population, and we have a lot more than just our population using our streets. So it's a, it's a huge drain on our infrastructure, for sure.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just had a quick question and then I suppose a point that I wanted to make about the street fund, both of the street funds in general. But first, so on page nine, under winter maintenance in the local street fund, I noticed that vehicle and equipment rental seems to have increased pretty significantly from the fiscal '21 budget. I mean, the amended budget amount is the same, but are we just delaying certain expenses there? I was just curious because it seemed that, you know, we're spending $130,000 projected in fiscal '21, and then in '22, we're projecting, we're requesting $400,000?
Yeah, the $400,000 request is trying to keep with the norms that we would experience if you look back on fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20, when we had some more significant winter, winter storms. And fiscal year '21, we, we had a very mild winter. So coincidentally, the, the expenditures kind of follow that activity as well. The rental is the amounts paid to our motor pool fund for the use of plows and equipment.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
Absolutely.
And then the, the other larger point that I wanted to make, as we discussed on Monday night, we, you know, as our City Manager stated, we were looking at a structural deficit, and a large part of that is due to our local road and street maintenance costs. And I think that, you know, part of that is that revenues haven't increased in a long time, but I think part of it is also just the built pattern of development in the city of Marquette in the latter half of the 20th century. Like many communities, we have a lot of suburban style development on the edge of town, many miles of roads with, even if individual taxpayers are paying quite a bit, there's not enough of them oftentimes to pay for the long-term maintenance and replacement cost of the infrastructure for running their properties. So I think moving forward in the very long term, you know, we need to be looking at smart growth principles when we're thinking about future development, our zoning code. You know, Marquette isn't unique in this respect. And so I, I think moving forward, I hope that one of the lessons we take from this is when we have future proposals for development, especially on the periphery of the city, especially more suburban style developments, that we start doing some cost benefit analyses and that we maybe look at a value per acre sort of analysis of some of these developments and think about, in the long run, when you're factoring in infrastructure costs, is it worth it? And, and start trying to have more infill development. And I think we're already having a good start with that, with some of the changes made to our zoning code in 2015, some of the things we've been doing. But that's a big underlying part of this problem, I think. And we're not the only city that's facing these huge infrastructure funding mismatches. There are many other communities that are facing those problems as well, and in most cases, I think that's a big root cause. Sort of non-sustainable, unsustainable development decisions that have been made over preceding decades. So I think that'll be, hopefully, something that changes in the future, but something that we all need to be aware of and, you know, not just thinking about the amount of tax dollars being generated by development, but also the long-term infrastructure maintenance costs associated with those developments.
We really need to roll on the budget. We have time for big, you know, thoughts afterwards.
Have a clarifying question, though?
Sure.
Which is...
Make your phone, please.
So we have, just so I understand the structure of this, third column from the right is activity through 630-21. And we have a negative number there at the bottom, minus 1.2 net revenue appropriations. But then projected activity is zero in the next two lines, because, yeah, could you, I imagine we're going to see a bunch of that, right? So just quickly...
Mostly in the street fund.
Oh, okay.
So we kind of let the year roll out, and then at the end of the fiscal year, we budget, we then do the transfer into this fund from the general fund.
Okay.
So that's why if you look up at the projected activity, that's where you see about $1.1 million coming in. And I can tell you that that is going to be from the general fund.
That's, okay.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. You bet.
Go ahead, Mary.
I'm just going to jump in real quick on this, on the street fund specifically because of our conversation that we had on Monday. And we talked about specific dedicated villages for streets, you know, in particular. So really what we would envision is that transfers in from the general fund would be, would change. And so that would be more replaced in the future. If that were the route we were, were to go, or that was the route that everybody approves, then, then that, that number would be what would change. That's the dependent number. That would free up general fund dollars for general fund operations versus dedicating, or sending it right over to street funds as we are right now. Just to make some clarification. Thank you.
Two quick things. One, just making sure I'm reading this right, for the college Ave, is the 4,000, $440,000, is that from the grant, or is that the cost of the road?
The road costs $1.8 million.
I guess...
Do you have this one?
That's from, that's from a previous meeting. Yeah, we don't have that. If you didn't bring it with you, you don't have it.
Never mind. And just wanted to maybe mention that...
Steve, the only reason I have that grant received in that footnote is I was trying to illustrate that of the $76,000 that we have budgeted in there, that there is a grant portion funding this project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is $325,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's really what I was trying to get there. Thank you.
You said two questions. You have another one, Cody?
It's all right. I can wait.
All right. Mary?
Seriously, those were the two worst that you're going to have to get through tonight. So, I hope. So on page 10, are we at our public art fund? So over the last few years, there has been a $30,000 distribution from the general fund going to fund public art in public spaces. And this has been, they've been accumulating fund balance for this, and they're just working on some, building on some big projects. So for the most part, this is just going to be the $30,000 transfer in from the general fund adjusted for inflation or interest or something like that. And they plan on expending some of that in the next fiscal year, and they're going to use some, some of that accumulated fund balance that they've been working on for this fund. Again, that one's pretty simple, I hope. Next fund is Fund 227, which is our sanitation fund. This is our garbage and waste management program. This is going to be fee-based, so whatever we expend for garbage collection and landfill hauling and stuff like that has a fee attached to it. And it's supposed to work out that whatever we are charged for hauling, we make up for in the fees that we charge for that service. Trying to keep it simple, so.
No significant changes.
No, exactly. Now, with the order of these funds, are there any questions on that one either? Okay. The order of these funds, now we start getting into the brownfield funds. Let's skip over those and we'll make sure that the brownfield is here to present those. And again, I'm learning a lot as we go through. I have many changes that I'm going to present next year, but bear with me as we go through this fund by fund. So we were skipping over brownfield and skipping over local development. So PEG is our next one, which is going to be on page 27. PEG is your public education and government access channel. We receive funds roughly $2,000 a month from cable franchise fees from Charter, and that's what funds the expenditures for televising these meetings and the equipment. And again, it's a very designated revenues coming in, and they are planning on, oh, excuse me, we do, they have pretty much expended everything. There was a loan that was done between PEG and the, one of the internal service funds, which was our technology services. So that's where a big chunk of the... PEG and the, one of the internal service funds, which was our technology services. So that's where a big chunk of the expenditures are going for next fiscal year is paying back that loan. Next fund is drug forfeiture, Fund 265. This one has no real consistency to it. It's very dependent on the activities of Blake's crew. So if they are in a situation where they can seize property, they do so, and then they are able to use that for continuing their drug enforcement programs. Skipping over Peter White Library, Fund 271. 283 is road maintenance. That brings us to page 34.
34.
Fund 283 and 284 are funded pretty much the same way. These are agreements that we have with Eagle Mine and Lundin Trucking to maintain that trucking corridor. They, we receive about 500,000 and 200,000 respectively from those programs. And again, the expenditures that go against that are just for the maintenance of that corridor. If I'm speaking incorrectly, any of you can raise your hand. Please. Okay. Fund 285 on page 36 is the criminal justice fund. These are state funds that we receive for police training. You can see it's pretty minor. So we kind of use these funds in conjunction with what is already budgeted for in the general fund as well. So again, a very small budget, $3,600 received from the state for training, and they will spend that for police training.
Three, page three, 38, sorry.
Yeah. Senior Services, Fund 290, beginning on page 40. This is a little different from the rest of the special revenue funds in that we do have a millage associated with this. So we do recognize some property taxes for funding this program. Again, I don't really have a whole lot of adjustments from prior year activities and unless I see a hand go up behind me, I nobody wants to talk, so. And then there is a straggler that is going to come in under a special revenue fund, and that's going to be on page 97. So it's going to be a significant jump for you to go to Lakeview Arena.
We'll give you a second to
I gotta get there too, so.
To get to page 97. And Mary will make sure that she explains why we, why we lump this in as a special revenue fund rather than what it would look like as an enterprise fund.
Totally an accounting thing. It's technically set up to be an enterprise fund, which means it's supposed to function as a business. But as over the years, because of the subsidy that the general fund contributes to this, it's large enough that in accounting terms and in auditing terms, it becomes a special revenue fund. Because in essence, it's saying you are taking general fund dollars to support this. So it becomes a governmental fund instead of a self-sustaining, self-supporting activity.
It's more lumped in with our, with how we consider it as a service and facility provided by Parks and Recreation, if that softens the blow a little bit.
So again, I know we haven't addressed the fee schedule yet. There have been, they are continually looking at the fee structure for Lakeview Arena. Actually, all of our departments are looking at the, their fee structures. And this, this fund was particularly impacted by COVID last year. And so the budgets are kind of trending back to a more normal year. You're going to see, I know Evan, you had commented at the last meeting about why there's been such a jump in the transfers in. And the biggest adjustment for that is due in part to the debt service payments that this fund is making. If you go all the way down to the debt service section of the page, you're going to see that there's $174,000 for the JCI contract and then $142,000 that they make in debt service payments. To note, this fund was looking for $150,000 in a capital outlay project. But because of budget constraints, they are going to defer that for another, until they can, another year at least, so.
Mary, I'm hoping you can clarify. I'm following. I see the lines you're saying, but I'm having a hard time putting it all together here. So 598,500 is the request from the general fund.
Yes.
150,000 is deferred. Why is it listed here, then?
It's just a footnote. It doesn't, it's not included in the total.
Okay, thank you.
It is one of the projects that they had hoped to submit this year. And we, because of of where we landed originally, we requested everyone to reevaluate what they are asking for, and projects that were not a necessity were bumped. So it's there, it's there mostly for for us. And and for you to understand that that's one large one that they bumped.
That makes sense. Thank you. And then the 142 and 174 that you mentioned, so this 142 transfers out debt service and the TELP lease. You said something about the JCI project. That's the JCI project?
That's the JCI project, yes.
So those are the bond repayments on the JCI project for Lakeview Arena specifically?
That's their lease payment, yes.
Are these, these have got to be elsewhere in our?
Yes.
So we're paying this all over in our?
Yes.
This is the Lakeview Arena portion. What is the 142?
That's their debt service payment.
For what? What did they buy? Is that all their Hockeyville stuff?
No, I do have this one.
John's smiling like he might know.
He might know. He can come up here and talk. Sorry, John. So many years of debt service to track. Dashboard was part of it. I know that one.
So as Mary's kind of digging into that, looking at the, at the history of it, that's all the things we've bonded for. So in recent history, the dashboards and glass that are being installed for this ice season, they're sitting on the floor in the Russell Arena currently. That was a big piece of it. Prior to that, we've been avoiding bonding for this facility for quite a while. So a lot of this stuff is still old items from, you know, 15 years ago. So I'm not sure if Mary even has those on her list.
Okay, so one follow-up. I'm sorry to go on about Lakeview Arena, but the 142 is included in the 598 requested, correct? Or is that on?
Yes.
So that's part of the 598. So it's not an addition to. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Cody, Eric, sorry.
You're good. Mary, so you said one of the reasons why the increase from the general fund was because the debt service increases. When I'm looking at this, I'm seeing a couple thousand dollar increase for the debt services, but I'm seeing 125,000 more than the previous year being transferred out.
I'm going to say most of that is the reason for the change in the last couple of years is that JCI payment, that lease payment, it's going to jump up for last year, of course, because, and I'm going to say that it's going to be a COVID impact, that they just, they didn't have the fees, you didn't have the ice time and stuff like that in there either. So but they still had to maintain operations and.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Was it $600,000, $600,000 in 2018, 19 approximately? Am I reading that right? That was 615,380. And that's, it wasn't, it was that much in the years previous as well, right? It was around that. And what I'm getting at is, like, so it was a bigger number. We did bring it down. And you're saying it's gone back up because of the lack of revenue. But the and the debt service went up. So will there be a debt service payment the year after?
Yes.
How many more years of debt service on?
I don't know.
I mean, that's a level of detail I understand. I can get back to it.
Well, she's looking that up. I guess I can kind of preface a few things here. So the history of Lakeview Arena, we've been much worse off than this, and we've been steadily growing toward a place where we would be requiring less general funds. COVID obviously was was difficult. The other thing that I'd say about this, and this is, I guess, a testament to, you know, the folks sitting at this table, this budget that you're seeing is is a little more conservative than what we may have brought forward in the, in the past. So if we're, if we're hoping for some revenue, that hope is not in here. If we are hoping that our expenses and our wages are less, that hope is not in here. But I'll tell you that, that we have a lot of hopes. And so we have an additional at least $30,000 worth of revenue that we have our eyes set on, and we have a lot of ideas for a lot of stuff beyond that. That's not in here. Additionally, the wages that you'll see in there are a little bit higher. That's if every position worked the maximum hours that we could have. And that's not something we typically would have done in the past, but we want to present a conservative budget that we know we can hit and we don't have any surprises with. So if you're looking at those numbers compared to some of the other years, that's, that's a lot of it.
I want to make a joke about a no-hope budget, but I won't.
Thank you for, for that. And it might even be worth occasionally reminding us that these are looking at the most for expenses and the least for revenue as we're going through it, because it's really easy for us to be scanning all the numbers and kind of forgetting that that's how you guys moved forward with this.
Mr. Stahmhouse?
John, question if you can. Go back in your memory. I remember maybe 10 years ago that the transfer in was an awful lot higher than it is now. Does that jive with your memory?
Yeah, there was, there was a point in time where Lakeview Arena was always the last thing in the budget hearing because it was expected every year that, you know, we were going to have the conversation about how difficult it was. And the reality is, I think that we were looking at transfers in excess of 700,000 at, at different points. And we've been as low as 200,000 or 250,000, so.
My, my point being in asking the question is that we are doing extraordinarily well, and compared to the difficulties we've had in the past. And I certainly would, would thank the folks that are working there and John and his team for being able to to get us as far as we have. It's just an impossible situation that you're not going to ever get to a zero generally. Hate to say that, but the real world is out there and it's just going to be, how low can we drive it? We're never going to get to the plus column. Thank you.
One other final thought just on, since I know everyone's watching this in Marquette. We do have a thousand square foot office space for rent in Lakeview Arena, one of our tenants has left, so feel free to come talk to us tomorrow.
Get after it, John. Nice work.
Mr. Banzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and I just want to, you know, thank you, John, for that information and for the efforts that you and your staff are making. This is really important. And, you know, looking back to like fiscal 14, 15, 16, we seem to kind of generally be in that 200 to 300,000 annual transfer realm. And hoping that we can get back to that point. That feels a lot more sustainable to me, maybe like a quarter million a year versus like half to 600,000 a year where we're at right now. And so I just wanted to emphasize that I do think it's really important, but I know that you're all doing the best that you can. But I think it's important that we continue to try and make that a goal. And, you know, maybe a, a good model to look at might be what we've been doing with Williams Park or with the Kids Cove Playground, trying to get user groups and community groups engaged in trying to support. I saw a comment on Facebook the other day. It's a little dangerous looking at the Facebook comments, but it sparked a thought for me. There was a, I assume, like a hockey or figure skating parent, somebody whose kids use the facility, and they were saying, ah, the city ought to just sell Lakeview to the, you know, hockey association and to the user groups, and they could run it. And I mean, clearly that person hasn't looked at this budget, but you know, it sparked a thought that maybe we can be working more closely with those groups to try and maybe do similar things to what we've done with the tennis courts at Williams Park or the Kids Cove Playground, getting more community support for some of these capital projects that need to happen. But thanks for everything you're doing.
On the JCI project, there is going to come a point where we're going to stop paying, but that's a good, what, 10 years away?
At least, yeah.
Yeah. Because it was a 28-year lease, I think. You guys remember?
I think it was around 20 years. Eric, can you correct this?
Yeah, I think it's around 20 years.
Yeah, 20.
Oh, it's 28 million. Maybe that was what it was, yeah. And so we're, we're paying for the improvements. So the cost of maintaining the facility, your, your costs went down. I mean, the costs have gone down, right? I mean, that, that part is true.
Yeah, as a result of that project, we've realized energy savings of about $60,000, so substantial. The facility is operating a lot more lean than it ever has. And the maintenance issues are substantially reduced, so.
And there's hot water in the, in the showers.
Yes, and there's hot water in the showers.
I heard that loud and clear when I, yeah, so there was not hot water in the showers. So now there is, so. That's good. Okay.
All right, go ahead, Mary. Thank you.
That will wrap up what we call special revenue funds. So the next is going to be an entire group, if you don't mind, if we can kind of attack the debt service funds all in one kind of general concept. Page 44 is where it begins. And it's going to carry us all the way through to page 66. The concepts of these are all the same. It just depends on what year we're covering of each of the bond expenditures. And I suppose it's probably a good time to kind of talk about the, the work we're going to keep doing on our debt capacity. So we're keeping a close eye on that for sure. Bear with me a second. So the way the debt service funds run is because of the way that governmental funds run. So your general fund, all the way through what we talked about in the special revenue funds. In the accounting world, these funds are not allowed to have liability on their books for the, for the debt that they incur. So these funds that we just talked about, special revenue and the general fund, in order for them to pay those large bonds, they transfer it to these debt service funds. So it's just, it's totally an accounting world thing. So this is where we account for bond principal and bond interest strictly for those governmental funds. You guys still with me? Okay. So for fiscal year 22 in total, it's looking like we're, and this is also going, I should take this number off too. Bear with me a second. I have the lease payment in here as well. So about 1.8 million dollars in principal is going to be paid out of this group of funds, and that is going to be strictly applicable to the governmental funds. And I do have an interest number. It's a whole group.
She's giving an overview.
It's covering everything from.
I put a note on page one, if that helps.
Yeah, 44, the first page on the table of contents, but it starts on page 44. Fiscal year 22. Yeah, it's going to be, I'm going to just say it's going to be about $2 million in, in a principal payments that are going to be coming out of this fund. These groups of funds for the governmental activities we've just been talking about.
We anticipated that number. Is that one of the numbers that we're trying to keep the same every year? Or is this going to change?
Will we have the new issue coming up that the fiscal year 21, or excuse me, the 2021 capital improvement bonds? Actually, those are going to be issued on next week. So that's going to add another $200,000 to this payment next year.
And this is just, this is cost of business. You don't, we're never not going to, we're never going to pay the off.
This is paying the minimum amount on our credit cards, basically. Yeah.
But that's normal. That's. That's normal.
But part of the process every year is reevaluating the the bonds that we do have outstanding and looking for those opportunities to either refund or shorten that or, you know, have some cost savings, which can be significant. So it's not, we just spend it, leave it go, and just keep paying without reevaluating every year and looking at what we do have. I think we had that a unique opportunity this time for refunding and reissuance and was able to take advantage of that, that opportunity to refund and lump that in with with a new issuance. So it provides a level of consistency. So when you do pay off and reissue more bonds, it provides a level of consistency with these payments, give or take 200,000, it sounds like this year, so, or next year. So that just seems to be the strategy that we have taken over the past many years.
Mm-hmm. 2007, I think, is when it really started to be.
And so what's the interest payment then?
I would say most of them are probably between 3% and 5%. This most recent issue, I think we were down to like one and a half. So, yeah, they're pretty low. And then again, we've been able to maintain that double A rating, which keeps our interest rates very low.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Quick question, if you have the numbers. Do you have any idea how much we're spending, I guess, per year for the debt just on, like, the road infrastructure, for example? For the money we've bonded for just road projects because we didn't necessarily have the funding for? If you don't have those numbers, though, I also, like, won't hold that against you.
I have a lot of numbers. That's the thing, is like, I have so much information in my head that I want to share with you all, but. So like in the major street fund, we've been, we're carrying bond balances in there since 2008. Principal payments next year is going to be 573,000. And I mean, let me give you a principal and interest total, about $741,000. The local street is the same thing. We're carrying, you know, bond payments in there since 2008. That's another $723,000. There is a little bit in those road maintenance and road safety to the tune of about $250,000 collectively. The Lighthouse project has about 121,000. And then the rest are going to be spread to our enterprise funds, which we'll hopefully talk about yet tonight. Stormwater, water and sewer. Governmental accounting is very interesting in that you can't just recognize it in one place. They want you to spread it according to the program, so.
Thank you, though.
Yeah, yep. So that is what we had hoped to get through just tonight. I'm ready to chug along if you guys want to keep going with me.
We are prepared to chug along.
Yes, yeah, so, okay. So now we get into the enterprise funds. And these are the ones that we, in the accounting world, we kind of talk about them as these are our business funds. So these are where we're really going to want to see that our revenue stream is taking care of the expenditures that we have in each of those funds. So we're going to start out with Tourist Park on page 68. Again, no major changes happening in this fund. This one operates pretty effectively as far as their fee structure and the expenditures that they incur. And actually, to the point that next year, we are budgeting the fact that they can actually put about 84,900, or excuse me, 84,290 back into their fund balance. So a very effective running campground. What's up?
Did we do the restrooms at Tourist Park? John, sorry.
Yeah, so the, we did do the restrooms at Tourist Park. So both restrooms were, had the addition of the family pods, which are unisex shower houses. And at the same time, we did the budget amendment to update all the rest of those facilities to match the new space. So brand-new restrooms, both east and west.
Thank you.
Another thing about, as we're getting into these enterprise funds too, and this is a conversation I have with a lot of department heads, is the concept of depreciation. So in these funds is where we can actually recognize that we can take something like the the family pods and we can remove that expense for that fiscal year off of the income statement and it moves into the balance sheet. And then we recognize that that cost of that asset over the life of it. So that's what you're going to see in depreciation in all of these funds.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Uh-huh, yes.
Thank you. Looking for it.
That is a huge difference with enterprise funds. And, I mean, technically, enterprise funds don't even legally have to have budgets approved. However, they are how we how we do it.
They're overachievers.
Well, and it's how it keeps us on our track, but those are, that's why you don't see those expenses for projects in there.
Thank you.
And so if we did, but there are things we want to do, which then, how, sorry, I'm sort of swimming with all this right now. But there are things we want to do and they will be done within the strategic plan and then within whatever bond money, or not bond money, whatever money there is in the balance money there is in the fund. Right, yeah, I see nodding heads. So that's the concept for these, the next set that we're going to have.
If there are sufficient funds.
Right.
Thanks, John.
Any else? Okay. On page 70, this will probably need to be renamed, but so far, it's the Lighthouse Park Fund. This is the, our our little lighthouse down by. And so far, it's kind of a complicated fund at this point because it's still kind of in its infancy. We purchased the asset and we put a lot of improvements into it in the last fiscal year. And we also absorbed a large bond issue. So until it gets fully functioning and up and running and generating the revenues that we anticipate that it will, it's incurring some debt service, some bond issuance costs. Fortunately, at this point, we have some bond proceed money still left on the on the asset side of it, on the cash side of it, which isn't in this presentation, to absorb some of those costs. So I don't really know how much further to go into this one. Because it's, like I said, there's there's a lot of development that needs to go into this one. But so far, we're looking at still about $63,000 in general fund appropriations. That's going to need to come in to help push this one along until it's fully running and functioning, so. But a lot of.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Ponsel has a question.
Yeah, Mary, I think we made the major investment in the Keeper's House, but that's where the bulk of the funding is going to. It's not going to the Lighthouse proper or to the old Station House.
Correct.
Which is fine. I mean, it's being directed at one facility out there, not other facilities.
This is looking more at it as a as a part of our park system.
Right, I understand.
So it's incorporating all of that into.
No, I understand. I just didn't want anybody to think that the money was going to the Lighthouse, which it is not. It is going to the Keeper's House primarily, which will become then a profit-generating enterprise, as it should be within the enterprise fund.
Yeah. It needs a new name to to be able to fully articulate what what the program is going to be, how the program is going to be working. So, and we'll work on that.
We'll get there. Thank you.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. Page 72 is the fuel system. Some years back, we moved this activity out of the service center. And we just wanted to get a true picture of how our cost of fuel is being recognized. And they also wanted to have a resource to be able to build up reserves for replacement and maintenance. So again, this accounts for the activities out there. There's a surcharge that helps to cover the reserves that are coming out. But again, this is one that whatever we purchase in gas, we try to make sure that we charge it out when it's being used. All right, I may need some help on these other ones as we start getting into stormwater. So anybody wants to come up and talk stormwater with me? I appreciate it.
And when we start talking about these types of enterprise funds and eventually when we get into rates, we will be discussing rates at another meeting, not tonight.
Seriously, anybody else want to talk stormwater? Thank you. So, you know, and again, I'm trying to keep this very, very top line. There's not a whole lot of excitement in these budgets this year, and I don't want to. I want to answer your questions, but I don't want to waste your time either with, you know, stuff that we've, we're kind of keeping the expenditures right in line where they need to be and making sure that the the fee structures are there to cover it, so. Anything else you wanted to?
No, other than, you know, the vast majority of the money in the stormwater utility goes towards road projects. There's a small amount that goes towards the maintenance of the utility itself, Public Works Department. That's really all I have to say. If there's any direct questions.
Well, I'm always going to ask about climate change. So, and and being, you know, that, how we're going to have, whatever we're going to, you know, the the bigger culverts, the stronger, how are we going to be able to handle or not handle any of those? You know, the stormwater in particular, I'll just focus on stormwater because that's the obvious one of where the damages can potentially be the greatest.
Right, and I am not sure what the Engineering Department designs the stormwater utility for as far as flooding, a 90-day or a 90-year flood or a, is it a 50-year flood?
Yeah, we've updated all our designs currently moving forward.
To, but to what? I hear you, okay, he can.
What was the question?
The the question is, we're going to have bigger storms that have greater impact on our stormwater, our capacity to manage that amount of water, and how are we going to manage that going forward at the highest, you know, at a high level? So what's what's the plan to deal with that? Or how are we, how are we going to start to plan to deal with that? I'm not, I know there's.
I covered this during the capital improvements tour, so I'll do it again.
We, in our engineering department, have, with our stormwater projects moving forward from this point, have upgraded from the normal process to upgraded. Now, we normally would design for a 50-year storm, but most of what we've been doing lately, depending on the size and availability of right-of-way and other factors, we typically look at the 150-year storms now in our design.
Which my experience in in many other municipalities is is a pretty standard part of the process when evaluating these projects.
And I.
But there's, but there's particular consideration coming up as well.
So, thank you. And then the grant, the grant that we just went for, that was. That was stormwater or was that the revolving loan fund?
That was going to be for the Solitario and the Water Treatment Fund.
Oh, okay, different fund, got it.
So I'm going to ask, on the the second blue highlighted area, I see the MDOT project in US 41, which obviously, if they're tearing that up, we're going to replace what we can, so that looks reasonable. SIMP, which we do every year. What is the curbing, replacement and extension? Do we know where that would be? I guess I'm curious on this list, if this list of the capital improvement projects is remaining the same or if we've cut some of these. And which would directly tie into some of the stormwater.
That would be another big question to answer.
Sure.
I'll gladly give. Because I'm thinking some of these are costs associated with some of these other streets, which aren't identified, and that's fine. But I'm just curious, top of this sheet, if we've eliminated any of these or if these are all still on the docket.
No, so when you look at this sheet.
Yep.
Everything that's up here is still being presented to be brought forward.
Got it, so then.
In regards to the curbing, repair, replacement and extension, that that is basically funding that is set in here. So when we do the SIMP project.
Yep.
If we run into any areas where we need to do something other than the street, then we have funding set aside for the curbing and the gutter or something like that.
I see that it's its own line item now that you pointed it out. So it's.
Yep.
I guess asking this question helped me understand. Thank you.
Yeah, and we don't, so obviously, we don't have a list of those. It's on a street-by-street basis when we do the SIMP.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. That that helps, and I think the the broader understanding helps me and probably other commissioners is that everything presented at the capital improvement tour is what is still in this budget.
Correct.
Thank you.
Actually, if I can, Madam Mayor, speak to that. We didn't present anything at the tour that we thought was going to be taken off or whatever. We were operating from the top half of the sheet, was we already.
Oh, yeah, I know, these were all delayed, right? I mean, I knew that, so, but I guess the the.
Oh.
Our capital improvement tour.
Yeah, nothing's been taken off since.
Yeah, and the capital improvement tour happened before we knew we had the shortfall, so that's where my question was coming in.
Mr. Ponsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is, this question is relevant to the discussion about the water and sewer funds that we'll be having in a minute, I'm sure. But I'm looking on my laptop right now at the Raftellus Utility Study. And just, you know, right now, we're looking at, according to the Raftellus study that was prepared for us, the updated one from last year, I believe, or from this May, rather. We're looking at 15, about a 15% increase in stormwater rates over the next four fiscal years. And I'm just curious if this budget is assuming city commission approval of rate increases that are in that range? Or, I mean, I believe the city manager said we're going to be having another discussion about that at a future meeting. But just curious if you could comment on that.
Yes, the revenue projections do include the projected rate increases that were suggested by the Raftellus.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate it. And I know for me, and probably for some of my colleagues, that's going to be a difficult discussion because, you know, I think we definitely need to be looking at, you know, I think with some of the rate increases we've had in recent years, we already have many city residents who are saying that they're having a hard time paying their bills, so. But at the same time, it's a tough budget year. So, and this is, these are long-term, again, looking at, we're looking at structural, structural deficits here for many of these funds. So I understand, but I'll look forward to that discussion. I think that'll be really critically important to the commission.
Looking forward to it, too.
Would we, would we potentially use, there's other projects that could be delayed about if the rates, if we are not comfortable with where the rates end up? Is that on the table?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we are going to save the rest of the utility conversations when we have those rates because I think it's, it's very important to have what that rate amount will increase and have the, that discussion of the impacts of not having those rates. And then we can look at this, this little bit more, you know, yeah, collectively here, so.
I appreciate you guys hanging with us as we jig jog through this. Okay, so then that's going to bring us to the Marina funds, beginning with page.
'92.
'92. And that's going to be the Presquion Marina. And we can probably kind of talk in conjunction with Fund 595, which is the Cinder Pond Marina. The big mover in this one is going to be in, let's start with Presquion Marina. They've got a grant-funded project that they're proposing in here. And again, everything else is pretty much standard. It is a 50-50 grant for pier removal and repairing. So far, that is going to be budgeted at.
So far, that is going to be budgeted at $524,000 with a grant match of, or excuse me, grant funded at 260, 210, or 100.
Let's give you a second to make sure that you digest all of that. Okay, you good?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm lost, but... Can you remind me about these floating docks? We have more floating dock expansions that that would... Okay, that's my fault, that that was... Thought we were done with this. The footnote is incorrect.
Okay.
That's my fault.
I think I'm going crazy back here.
Yeah, I apologize for that. It's a new system of budgeting that I'm using, so I'm kind of learning how we should use it, and all of this feedback is going to be beneficial in that. But no, that is actually for the pier removal and repaving, not the floating.
And if you look a couple lines above that, that amount that is included in that footnote for a floating dock matches the pier removal and repaving. Yep. And it's a different, as she said, it's a different system, but also it's... I was, I'm aware that the view of how this normally looked compared to previous years is vastly different as well, so. So, we understand there's a little bit of change.
So, what is this pier removal and repaving?
So, this is a Michigan Waterways Grant, and we have received the grant agreement. So, it was brought to you during COVID when we were all online, the meetings were...
Sorry, I'm not remembering it at this moment.
Yeah, so you guys approved the submission of the grant, and we received the grant agreement. And the goal would be in the spring of next year or two, to begin that project. So, there's a bit of legwork to do to line up a contractor for it in terms of the over-the-water work, but that's the last remaining bin-style pier that's out there. We're removing that and then paving that parking lot where the Marina Service Building is.
So, the total cost is? $524,200, but we have this grant that pays for about half, right?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Makes sense. And that grant payment amount is, if you see up at the top, that 260, 210, right at the top. Yep.
Thank you. I just forgot momentarily about that grant. I apologize, John.
That's okay.
But even with that, this fund in particular is operating well enough that you're right underneath that. You're going to see the balance sheet offset, which is, again, is an accounting thing where we capitalize that asset, we're able to take it off of the revenue expenditure sheet, but you'll also see that there's $67,820, and that is the amount of budgeted revenues that are going to exceed the expenditures. So, even with this, they're still operating within...
Ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Ahead of themselves, so.
What it's supposed to be doing as an enterprise fund?
Yeah, yes.
And I would just, I guess, add to that, that you're going to see that in Cinder Pond as well, and that's a testament to the fiscal policy that this commission or previous commissions adopted that has kind of put us on the right path, so it's a good news story.
So, any questions on the Marina funds? All right, again, speaking at such a top level, this makes this process very quick to get through. So, now we transition into the internal service funds. These are the, these are the funds where we have a pool of assets that we then charge out to ourselves to use, beginning with the technologies...
Page 100.
Yep, sorry. Tech services on page 100. So, for all of our technology, our printers and software fees, everything flows through here under the appropriations or the expenditures line. For fiscal year '22, we're looking at about $1.1 million in activities going through there, and correspondingly, they charge this out. You're going to, we could do an analysis that could show you how each fund is being charged, but those are being charged out to all the enterprise funds for their use, all the governmental funds for their use. This fund, as well as Motor Pool, especially, when the general fund is in trouble, as we've been, you know, that's one area we can kind of look at and say, what can we do to reduce the revenues in any of these types of funds, to kind of help it out a little bit? But so far, this one is just accounting for all of the tech services that we're expending, and they charge it out appropriately.
I mean, internal service funds, if not, if not looked at and not monitored appropriately, they can be a mechanism for, you know, pooling some money and housing some money, which does not do any service for any of the other funds, unless you're trying to purchase something rather large, or, you know, save up for a future project or expenditure that these funds would be a part of. So, I'm incredibly impressed, though, that these have been operating quite efficiently, and there's not much room there to take from. So, I'm proud. I wish it were the million-dollar ticket that we were looking for, or the $4 million ticket we were looking for, but these really do operate quite efficiently. I'm impressed.
Your Honor?
Mr. Stonehenge?
Just a general comment. Thank you very much for being sharp and eagle-eyed and really looking at those funds. I've always looked at them as an opportunity, as a license to steal.
Right.
And thank you for keeping it down to controllable limits. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Service Center, again, on page 103. Once again, very standard expenditures going through in this fund. A few small items for some security improvements and HVAC upgrade. That's going to be under, you're going to see those footnotes right about in the middle of the page. And they receive their revenues from some rents, and they also had a fund balance that they're able to borrow from in order to accommodate these expenditures. And then we go to Motor Pool Fund, page 105. This is where our fleet of vehicles and equipment are held, and they use those rents in order to cover the maintenance and expenditure for, reserves in order to purchase replacement equipment. This budget is looking at about $3.7 million, and you're going to see a lot of ins and outs in those footnotes. I did request that this fund have some reduced expenditures for their equipment purchases. As we look at the rates that are charged to the general fund, I was admittedly a little nervous about some of the fees that are charged there, so I did ask the Motor Pool Fund to reduce their expenditure budget to about half of the rents that they're charging the general fund. So, just kind of pulling that expenditure back a little bit to about $400,000 in new equipment this year, to try and, try and keep things in line, so. And they seemed pretty responsive to that. They weren't, they weren't too upset, so. Yeah, that one would change, right? Yep.
Can I go back to the building itself, just real quick? Because I remember, I was here when it was built, but I wasn't... Thank you, whoever's turning on my microphone. Kyle's doing a very good job. Increase the clerk's budget. So, I just want to, the building itself is paid for, done, because it seemed like there was a whole thing with the hospital and the service center and all of that. Are there any other, sorry to go back one, but it just, it popped into my head with one of these items on this, but it's, is it?
I don't think it's... The service center?
Yeah.
That debt is carried in the Brownfield Fund.
Ah, okay. Okay, Ben, all right.
And that'll be a future meeting date. We'll have the Brownfields here. Yeah, I think you guys would like to have our friends here to present their budgets, so, yep. I'm prepared to talk about them, but... And we'll give them a chance to discuss themselves, too. So, finally, the Energy Enhancement Fund on page 109, lovingly referred to as Fund 666. This is where we account for the lease payment. We have so few ways to have colorful fun in the accounting world, so. This is the TLP lease payment, or the JCI lease that we have. Next year, we're anticipating 1 point, just about $1.3 million in that lease payment, and that is funded by transfers in, as you're going to see throughout the expenditures. That line item you guys have been asking about, that debt service TLP payment, this is where all that funding goes. So, the one that was on Lakeview Arena? Mm-hmm, yep, yep. All filters in here to pay the payment. So, that is the quick analysis of the entire city funds, other than general fund. And I know there's going to be a lot more detail that we could dig into, but because this is such a, again, I keep using the word status quo, but because it is such a pretty level budget from what you've been seeing in the prior fiscal years, I think we can kind of take it at that top level and dig into some questions when we meet again, so. Or still here. I'm happy to.
So, out of the funds that we reviewed tonight, is there something we needed, a fund that we need to revisit? You know, Jenna, I'll close out with where we're going to go next, but before we shut our binders, you know, is there something that we need to revisit or that you would like us to dig more into and return with a little bit more direction? I did hear Lake Shore Boulevard would be something we were talking about. Obviously, we still have the other remaining funds and fee schedule, but is there anything else that we are missing on our list to come back with?
I'll start things off. I have three things written down, and then I will go through the commission, starting with Commissioner Bonzel and on the way down. So, I have Lake Shore Boulevard Phase 2, rate increases, water, wastewater, sewer, and then it doesn't need to be budget-related, but an update from JCI. I don't know if we can get a presentation or even an email with a summary as to where we're at from them. I think that would help with some of our understanding of the past project and how that's impacting us financially now as well. Those are the three on my list. Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you all for the work that you put into this. I'm sure it's been an incredibly busy couple of weeks here, and, you know, I'm really appreciative of it. As far as things that, I agree with Mayor Smith, that I would like to see some more details and perhaps some more options on Phase 2 of Lake Shore Boulevard. It just seems like a very large expense, given the shortfall that we're looking at. And then moving forward, and I know we're going to have further discussion about this, but I would also second the point about utility rates. You know, especially looking at the Raftellus study, I, from the beginning, have been very concerned about the significant increases in the fixed charge that Raftellus recommended and the impacts that could have on smaller property owners in the city, lower-income city residents who don't use as much water. It seems that we're shifting more of the burden onto those folks, perhaps, so. And that's something that's concerning, especially seeing as, I think there's at least some initial evidence that even the utility rate increase we've seen so far had a significant negative impact on lower-income residents, so. Just something to be aware of. So, having a couple of options there, I think, would be very helpful when we have that discussion. Other than that, I think everything looks good. The only question that I still have in my mind is just, we're looking at a $4 million shortfall. I know we're recommending, it seems like the commission was generally in agreement with, like, taking somewhere between 2 and 2.5 million from reserves. So, where is the remaining 1.5 to 2 million coming from? I still don't have a clear picture of that after this. And I mean, I guess maybe I'm not supposed to yet, but that's just something that, that's kind of the feeling I'm taking out of this right now.
And Commissioner Bonzel, I'll just jump in to say, I agree with you on the 2, 2.5 million from reserves is what we talked about in our work session. It's my understanding that about 1 million is the ARPA funding, so what they're looking to cut about 1 million, based on the guidance we gave them on Monday evening. I don't know where that 1 million is coming from yet, but that's what they're working on.
Sure.
That's why we don't, we're not looking at the general fund today. We're giving them all the time.
Yeah, of course. I understand, but that's just, I just wanted to voice that. But I do appreciate all the work you're doing and look forward to future discussions.
Commissioner Davis?
I can be real quick. Mary, it appears to me that you are making these budgets presentations different because it fits what you, the changes you are making in your new role, and I appreciate that you are working and changing things. They look real different to us this year, but that's not a bad thing. I think it's a good thing, because it's making us think a little more. And I agree with what our mayor presented as some, three of the topics that we will be looking at in the future. Also, I, you know, as like everyone else, you know, that whole $4 million is kind of keeping me up at night. It's probably doing worse things for a couple of the other people in this room. But I also am very curious, you know, and maybe it's just kind of a little, tell us how you got there. You reduced things by 2 million, and I'm real curious as to how you managed to do that. That's pretty impressive. So, maybe just a little review of that for us would be, help us to give a better overview of the challenges that you and our management staff have been facing this budget season.
Yeah, yep. Who will do that?
All right, first, thank you. This is amazing and wonderful to understand everything that you give to us. You explain it thoroughly well. I agree with everything they've talked, wanted to talk about. One thing I want to point out, and maybe I just, it's not that I'm opposed to grants, it's just that I have a hard time spending money just because we received money. What about the College Avenue reconstruction? Isn't that a place we could save money? We haven't spent any of that money from that grant that I know of, and that's a $325,000 grant, but a $1.8 million project? So, isn't that something that we could say, hey, we just don't do it, we lose the $325,000, but we don't spend 1.8 million?
That is something that has been tossed around, and that is still, things that we are evaluating when we look at the end, when we look at the end product, especially when we start talking about the general fund and where we're looking to minimize some of our expenditures. That is something we are looking at, most certainly. It's not out of the question. It's presented tonight, because that is how we're moving forward, and we're still working through the general fund, which will affect those other two funds we're talking about.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Good point.
And there's still that question of the revenue isn't also... Part of the problem is both expenditures, but then revenues. And is there any opportunity for the, particularly with the BLP? Is that somewhere, is that going to be a conversation? Where's that going to go, or how, whatever? I feel like that's a really important, maybe, process. I, it seems very, very important to me in terms of understanding our revenues and where they're going to be coming from. And then I really appreciate Commissioner Bonzel bringing up the impact of the fixed charges in particular. There are some other creative ways, I was on a three-hour meeting today on, for my job, for how the Michigan Public Service Commission is looking at changing how rates are structured to take equity into account. As it's become with rising rents and the need, you know, water is really important, was incredibly important, and we may need to really think about how we structure those in a way that is very different than it's been in the past. And I can share some of those resources. So, I would really like to know, as we're getting ready for that presentation, there are things that are happening in other communities around this that are not just what the consultant says, but are really taking residents into account. So, I would like to be able to help provide that information to some, to whoever needs to, how that could be moved forward. And then, did I put stars next to here? The, I think that was really, yeah, sorry, I'm just making sure I got everything. And again, you guys... again, I, you guys are doing, you know, are providing very good service to the community. There's no doubt about that. But that's why I'm like, what about revenues? What can we do to get the money in to keep the level of service? That's really important, and I look forward to really going in depth in that conversation.
And I want to speak to that again real quick and just remind you that my comfort level in presenting this budget is to keep those revenues very conservative. So will we have these conversations? Absolutely. But I'm not going to budget on a what-if or a maybe. I think John even spoke to that, too. He's like, you know, we know there's going to be more, but Mary doesn't want us putting it in there on a supposition. So again, as I'm learning my role as your CFO, you're going to see these budgets probably more routinely than you've seen them in the past, because I'm going to need to be consistently monitoring it, especially when we're in this, you know, kind of a budget concern. I want to make sure that we're staying on top of it, and when those revenues are ready to be recognized, you'll see a budget amendment coming through for those, for sure.
Okay. That's really good to hear. Thank you.
The budget that we're adopting, that we would be proposing to adopt, is not going to be the budget at the end of the year, and you've seen that already in our current year. So this is your best estimate and your best guess in what we're authorized to spend, but knowing full well that this is going to change and because of where we are, Mary is taking an even further commitment to looking at that more regularly.
Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I also would like to thank you guys for, I can't even imagine the amount of time and energy and effort put into this. And also, I think this was a very easy idea, follow along and kind of think as we're going quickly through it kind of process, so I appreciate that. I'm going to just hit a couple of quick bullet points. Commissioner Hanley mentioned college AV, you know, earlier, one of the reasons why I asked how much that grant was, I was trying to clarify that, is because that was also a thought that went through my mind, as maybe pushing that off right now and not having that expenditure on here. I'd also like to thank the mayor for bringing up Lake Shore Boulevard, because that is another one that I think could potentially be pushed off from this coming year. I still personally want to talk about a road millage and discussing what something like that would look like over the next few years, as well as, again, going back to how much we're paying for the bonds we put on stuff like that versus how much revenue we could be bringing in dedicated to that. Also appreciate Commissioner Bonzel bringing up the utility rates and, of course, having percentages to go with them. And I also think with all that being said, looking again at the capital LA projects and maybe having a little bit closer look at what we have on there right now would also not be a bad idea. And I know Lake Shore Boulevard, College Ave are two of those, but, okay, I'm good.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you for what you've done. Certainly, it's remarkable to get that amount of work done in the very short period of time you had to do it. Thank you for being flexible, turning around, looking at alternatives, and presenting us with a very doable budget. Generally speaking, uncomfortable with what you've done and presented, and I think that's a great way for us to proceed forward. The issue of water rates, certainly, we want to look at those when those come in. I think that's important. Look for alternatives. But I will assure people, there is no magic. The unicorn will not arrive and figure out, give us a special way to pay and make it all free for people. It's not going to happen. So we are going to have to make a hard decision on what we want to do with those rates, and we have to stand by that decision, because that is a fund that is a business, and it has a cost involved, a fixed cost, it has delivery cost, and then we're paying for the system. So that's our responsibility as the leaders of this community to make sure that we do that. But it's also our responsibility to look at what alternatives we may have. But I think in the end, we pretty much have to do what is recommended, because we have to pay for the system. I'm comfortable with Lake Shore Boulevard as planned and presented. We have made legal obligations to folks that have given us money. We have grants we've accepted to do that, to say we're not going to do it, we're going to stop, we're going to put it off for a couple of years is simply not a tenable or reasonable solution. We have to make this work however we can, but we have to make it work. If we can find additional funding for it, certainly great, great and good, and we need to look at that. And we need to keep our eyes open for the enhanced revenue we may be able to get. Certainly, we all know that the American Recovery Act has not bothered to give us the money yet, or more particular, the state of Michigan is still setting on it. So if we have a problem, we really need to talk to our state leaders and say, where is the money? And cause them to actually do their job in getting that money passed through to the cities. And that would give us a million dollars this year, which would go a long way to help, certainly with the budget. I certainly would want to look at a road millage. I would want to know what that would bring in every year. In other words, how much could we do with it? How much money would it generate? Because I think that really is a longer-term solution to the difficulty we're having. But we also need to understand that Marquette is kind of constricting on itself. In other words, we're, yes, we have property values increasing, but we also have the cost of the constant climb of the cost of things that's going on that's eating away at us. We're bringing business in, but that business is in the form of condominiums that are tied up with brownfield projects that we are not seeing the funding from. And we have to fix that on a long-term basis. So five and 10 and 20 years, we have a constant stream of revenue as we should have, because that's why those brownfields were developed in the first place, to be able to feed the city's general fund as we should. We don't have an automobile plant that's going to come into the city of Marquette. We don't have a magic bullet of an employer that's going to bring 500 people in and produce something so valuable that the property tax will be extraordinary. We have to live with what we have. We understand we're a boutique community. We understand our strengths and our weaknesses, but we have to live within the walls of reality. And that's what I'm asking everyone to consider as we move forward and through this budget. But thank you very much for the work you've done, and thank you, commissioners, for the thoughts that you certainly have put into it.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, city staff. I think you've done a remarkable job getting things down from a potential five point eight million dollar deficit down to four, which maybe we'll only need to use about two, two and a half from the general fund, maybe more. Maybe, I don't know what that looks like quite yet, but I appreciate all the creative solutions you continue to bring and putting in a lot of time and energy into thinking about this. Thank you. It's a difficult time for you, Karen, coming on this year, and Mary starting a new role, and the rest of the department heads for supporting them in their roles. Thank you for helping them out. And we will get through this. It may not be pretty at times, but at the end of the day, we'll do what's best for the residents of City Marquette. I've kind of gone out of order because I, it had more of a work session feel for a minute, so if it's okay with the commission, I think I'm going to skip comments from the commission later on. I think I'm going to move into public comment, and then I'll give our city manager a chance to speak, just to try to go back to what the agenda said I should do. So at this point in time, if any members of the public would like to approach the podium and give a public comment, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please clearly state your name and physical address.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that. First suggestion I have for the team is, since Monday, I've been talking to a ver, lot of people. You could not imagine the number of people who walk up to you when you're picking up cigarette butts and want to talk about the city budget. And everybody I talked to is in favor of an increase in the local tax on cigarettes. One dollar, two dollars a package, they're fine with that. Now, it may seem symbolic, but it's a two-for. It's number one, it would go right into the city, and number two, it could discourage local purchasing, which would make my job easier. Number two, am I the only person in this room who doesn't work for the city? Okay. You got a public relations job right now to do that is going to be much more than you've ever had to do before. And I don't have any magic on this, but I remember when I was working for a company that had been living in a dream world about money for a long time, and when I had to tell them the truth, I had to have slides put together to present to audiences of different, like civic groups, like northern, all the, all the big participants in the city of Marquette need, like a road show. I don't mean it any other way than that, but I was hoping there would be more civilians here tonight, and there simply isn't. Number three, the statement made about property taxes not going up in the last 10 years, I actually had someone pin me against the car two nights ago telling me how much their property taxes had gone up. That probably could use a little bit more explanation, is what I'm saying, because the general perception of this person was that her property taxes had gone up every year. And another thought that I have, the general fund is like our savings account, and it's gone from over 11 million, and with a little bit of luck, it'll bottom out at about 4.25 million. That's a trend that has to be stopped and reversed. Also, our bonding capability, we borrowed to the, just about to the max on our credit cards. I mean, the most critical statement Monday night was that one organization was no longer recommending our bonds. That has to be turned around as well for long-term stability. I echo what Commissioner said about you cannot walk away from obligation on a grant by saying you don't want the money. The reason is not that you can't do it, it's that if you do it, you'll never get any grant money again. I mean, once you sign up for a grant, you got to run with it one way or the other, and I wish it were different, but it's not. And the last thing I want to say is I appreciate the attention being paid to Lakeview Arena. I did get a lot of positive comments on what I said about that two nights ago. But get your road show ready, get your slides ready, and just go ahead and sell this to the people. Thank you.
That's three minutes. Thank you, Ms. Brum. All right. Anyone else for public comment? Meant to ask our city clerk earlier, did we have any written public comments this evening?
We did not receive any.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to comments from our city manager before we adjourn.
Perfect. Thank you, and thank you for the feedback and for sticking with us as we kind of move through this pretty quickly. You know, while we can, we can plan for this all day long, but we really try to leave some room for adjustments or for some modifications based off of the conversations we have. So we appreciate the flipping of the pages and the hold on moments, let's add this up kind of moment. So thank you. As for the next meeting, which we are still working on that date, we did pull on the commission. We do have a date, and it looks like only one of those dates that we requested is going to work, so we will condense quite a bit as much as we can. We will be revisiting those enterprise funds that we started tonight, and obviously, that rate component will be in there as well. And we will also talk about component units, so your library, brownfield, LDFA, things like that, and DDA. And then we will, we will then talk about the fee schedule, and we will, of course, revisit the general fund and where we are with those changes and with the ideas that we, we have come up with in order to meet those marks that we discussed on Monday. So again, thank you for your feedback. Thank you to Mary and Sean and all the department heads that were, were part of this. This has been a wild ride, and everybody has really learned a lot from this. So that's it. Thank you.
Great. We are adjourned at 6:55 PM.